For the next item, I am pleased as always to have Dr. Tigan come forward and share an update from our health committee as we have become accustomed to at each and every meeting. And so she's going to make her way and provide us again, an update of local health conditions, as well as any other matters that have been surfaced by the health committee.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chairman Cooper, members of the board, and Dr. Cashwell. This afternoon, I will provide you with an update from our health committee meeting just this past Tuesday.
Please pardon our technical difficulties. And as she gets that presentation back up, I would just also, if you could come in a little closer to the mic when you're speaking.
Absolutely. Today's agenda includes...
Pull it down a little closer. Thank you.
Includes the current transmission level for Henrico. Sorry, we're having to be cumbersome here. Plans for vaccination clinics, additional information on contact tracing, and some new quarantine recommendations. Starting with the transmission level. If you can, I'll signal you one. Thank you. On Tuesday, the health committee reviewed the current health data for Henrico. Two weeks ago, I shared that the transmission level remained at the high level. As of this past Monday, we remain at the high level of transmission today. Based on the seven-day data from August 29th to September 4th, the number of new cases per 100,000 in Henrico was 254.5. It was 214 two weeks ago. The percentage of PCR tests that were positive during the same time period was 8.8%, up from the 7.3% two weeks ago. The health committee did not discuss the level of school impact as the school year had not started yet. That does not mean we haven't been working cases, though. The Virginia Department of Education, I'm sorry, the Virginia Department of Health and the Richmond-Henrico Health District are currently planning the vaccination events at both Fairfield and Elko Middle Schools to address the needs of our five- to 11-year-olds. Of course, these efforts are preliminary until the Pfizer vaccine is approved for this age group, but we're excited that work is underway. The same is true for the boosters, for those who receive the Pfizer and Moderna vaccines. While there's been much conversation about boosters and how and when they might be administered, the rollout of the boosters is also still awaiting green light from the FDA and the CDC. As shared two weeks ago, we talked about what close contact meant. A close contact means being within six feet of someone with COVID-19 for a total of 15 minutes or more over a 24-hour period. The VDH has clarified that there is an exception for K-12 settings. A student who was in three feet of an infected student is not considered a close contact, so that's three feet or more, as long as both the infected student and the exposed student wore well-fitted masks appropriately for the time they were together. This has been updated to apply to any K-12 setting, to include outdoors. The exception does not apply to teachers, staff, or any other adults. And the exception does not apply to pre-K or any childcare providers. And lastly, it does not apply to school buses. That's something that's still under consideration, but at this point in time, school buses are still at six feet. Thus, HCPS will be using the recommended three-foot social distancing for K-12 students when contact tracing, if both students were properly masked. We encourage parents to practice proper mask-wearing outside of school to ensure that it happens within our school buildings. There has also been updated guidance related to quarantining. The general guidance for unvaccinated or partially vaccinated people identified as a close contact has not changed, but the Delta variant has impacted the pathway that we will be following. As the Delta variant spreads more quickly, we are able to reduce the quarantine period from 14 days to 10 days. So, unvaccinated or partially vaccinated people could stay, would stay home, monitor their symptoms, and follow all recommendations, including wearing a mask, watching their distance, washing hands frequently, for 10 days after their last exposure. The additional guidance is that if an unvaccinated individual gets a negative PCR or rapid test performed on or after day five, the VDH states that they may return to school or to work on day eight. We will be transitioning to this approach in the next week. We plan to train additional staff to support the added volume of work, but we want impacted students and staff to be able to return to the classroom or work as soon as possible. The guidance for fully vaccinated people for COVID has not changed, and they do not need to quarantine as long as they do not have symptoms. It is recommended that the fully vaccinated people should get tested three to five days after close contact exposure and wear a mask in public indoor settings for 14 days or until they receive a negative test result. The health committee continues to collaborate with both the Richmond-Henrico Health District and the Virginia Department of Health to review the most current guidance, as well as to collaborate on the workload related to contact tracing. And at this time, I'm happy to answer any questions for you. My partner, Ms. Gilbert, is not here today because she is busy processing some of our close contacts and our positive cases.
Thank you so much, Dr. Tigan.
You're welcome.
Ms. Cancela, I'm going to start with you.
Yes, well, thank you for, thank you for this update. I guess I'll start with, you said, we'll start with the contact tracing. I'm certain Ms. Shea is going to have more detailed questions, so I'll just stick to some about staffing. I've heard from a lot of folks, whether it's families or employees, about the time it's taken us to contact trace. And given what you just said, you know, it's not going to take as much time for quarantine, but that the amount of time it's taking for contact tracing has caused quite a bit of frustration. So, do we expect to, how do we expect to get Ms. Gilbert some assistance with the contact tracing? Are we thinking potentially using some employees that we currently employ, perhaps offering extra hours to them, similar to how our nurses helped fill the void, fill the void in January, you know, when we were given vaccines?
We have several strategies. One, we have allocated four part-time positions specifically for contact tracing. Two have been hired and are in the process of being onboarded. Two others are still being sought. There are candidates, so we're, should be shortly at the point of being able to do interviews. We've also temporarily reassigned two staff members to help with contact tracing, and one of those individuals happens to be a nurse, but it's not coming out of a school where it's needed, you know, where she's got the ability to be able to do this short-term for us. And so, you know, with that staff, we know we're staffed greater than we were last year. We know we have more students back in the building. We've also are working to identify three other staff members to be able to help with this next phase of if they've tested, having a different place and phone number to call to be able to report that they've been tested and to help work those cases. So, we're really trying to divide and conquer, so it's not all of the work falling in the same office either. And so, we'll continue to monitor based, based on needs.
Okay. Thank you for that. Let's see, I guess next, sports. Sports have been an issue. I think we've had our cases with athletics, not necessarily inside of our buildings during instructional time. If you could please explain one more time how we don't make the rules in terms of sports and sporting events, that there, those are VHSL rules for the high school?
Well, the high schools are ruled by the VHSL. You know, we have, we do expect our athletes, when they're not performing, that they're masking, just like everyone else, that when they're actually on the field, they are. I would say, and I can't be, it's not 100%, but many of the cases where there has been transmission, I would say it hasn't happened actually on the, on the athletic field. You know, carpooling together and not wearing masks in vehicles and being in close contact, there are other things that, that impact the close contacts and the spread. And so, it's hard with the limited exposure this year, but we're seeing patterns that are about behaviors outside with mask-wearing and social distancing that are also impacting athletics at this point.
Okay. Thank you. And then, having spent some time in my schools last week, elementary, middle, and high school, to see the mitigation plans and the safety plans that our principals put together, and then having spent some time in schools this week with students actually, and the students and staff actually in the schools, we do expect plans to potentially change, right, to be flexible, fluid, flexible, and subject to change in response to not having students in the building, and now that we have students in the building, we do expect to see some change.
I think you, as a principal, you're monitoring all the time, and especially at the beginning of any year, so in some ways, not any different than previous years. You know, you'll have staff meeting, you know, at least once, maybe twice, this is a short week with only being three days, to get feedback from your staff about what's working, what's not, and coming together. And I also know Dr. Grant and her team are meeting with their principals to debrief and to, you know, assess what's happening in the buildings and if there are need for any changes or a level of support, you know, that's what they'll consider that and, you know, work with their principals on what is needed.
I'd like to make a request or recommend that when the principals do, when leadership does meet with principals, that we revisit, especially in our high schools. I would like to see the plans revisited in terms of one-way direction, perhaps staggered bells. I don't know how that impacts seat time, but I'd like for that to be considered, having been in high school, Glen Allen High School to be exact, and also having received quite a bit of correspondence, just about, and realizing that the high schools, all nine, are not using one-way hallways. Are we, am I correct on that? That's my understanding.
That, that's likely true, is that principals have the ability within their building to look at, you know, combination between the number of students who are in this, in the school, as well as the design of the school as to how they've laid that out.
Okay.
That's one of the things I'm sure they'll, they'll look at and consider with their staff. We know when they're in the hallways, you know, they're, they're wearing masks, that's an expectation at all times inside the building. You know, that's one layer of mitigation we have. We know there's added mitigation strategies in classrooms and so on when we think about seating charts and possible plexiglass barriers and so on. So, there are different mitigation strategies.
Well, that's, that's important, especially in our schools where we have more students. Again, Glen Allen High School specifically, and after what you presented about the greater-than-three-feet when possible, I'm not certain greater-than-three-feet is always achievable in some of our buildings, depending on capacity. So, I appreciate the team looking into that with our, and working with our principals so that we can revise some of our safety plans. And then, my next questions are for Mr. Pritchard, and they concern transportation and filtration. Yes. Okay, so I appreciate all the questions you've answered from folks about filtration. If you could just give a brief update about filtration and the air scrubbers that we put in all, that we're putting in all of our schools, right, that, that we purchased, if you could just give a brief update about that, I'd appreciate it.
Sure. And previously, they were put in our clinics and our isolations rooms. When we did a study back in last spring and fall, when we were upgrading our filters, some of our systems are not able to adapt to changing our filters and upgrading. So, we were able to place filtration systems or air scrubbers in classrooms that were, that was impossible. So, we were able to do that. I know that we've made our deliveries around to the elementary schools to place air filters and air scrubbers, or air scrubbers into the cafeterias, and they were being delivered as they were purchased and being delivered to the secondary schools this week.
Okay.
Yes.
Great. Thank you. And then, the next subject is transportation, and, and I realize we are still short drivers, and we're doing the best that we can, and that we'll, it will get better with each day. Do we have access to a bus app?
We are in the process of putting the bus app or having the bus app installed to our buses, all 600 of them. That's a timely process, like everything else, the delivered date on getting those devices here, were compounded with COVID and everything else, but we are in the process of getting them installed on our buses as we speak.
Okay.
Yes.
So, so after they're installed and folks are trained, do we expect to share that?
Yes, we do.
And have that available for parents, right?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
And then, in the interim, principals don't know which buses are going to be late, do they? Not necessarily, right? Like, the notifications are made from transportation?
Yes.
And that's through Messenger, correct?
Yes.
I'd like to request that principals get, have some knowledge of that, just so that they can better respond to parents, if you will.
Yes, ma'am.
And then, I'd also like to make one more recommendation, that when leadership meets with our principals, that they revisit some of the traffic patterns. I know those are impeding our buses as well, are they not, Mr. Pritchard?
Yes, they can be at times, yes. I mean, first day was the first day, but the thing, I know when I made my rounds around this morning, there was a drastic improvement in that area, and it will continually get better as the days kind of settle down. But yes, I mean, I think that always going back and taking a look at your traffic flow would help, primarily at our elementary schools. That's, that's where probably most of our congestion occurs because of the size of the footprint of the school and the layout and the way that they were done back in the day when most of the kids rode bus to school or they walked to school, so.
Okay. I would also, I'd just like to see it across the elementary, middle, and high.
Yes.
And with attention, especially with our juniors and seniors driving, considering their safety and just all the students that I've seen in doing transportation with my own children. I'd just like to make sure that happens. And then, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Cancela. Ms. Shea.
Yeah, Mr. Pritchard, you just wait right there.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, the two biggest pieces of feedback I've gotten this week have been about quarantine, which I'll go into with Dr. Tigan and transportation. And so, I think Ms. Cancela covered a lot of the points. Just two more about transportation. Can you just share with our public what you shared with me about school Messenger? So, we use school Messenger to notify of late buses. There was some frustration that it wasn't used yesterday for late buses, and the reason is?
We had a, our school Messenger was not working properly the first thing yesterday morning. Of course, it was not. So, it was first day of school, and that went down, and so we had issues, and it wasn't until mid-morning when, when it was able to be reestablished and used.
Thank you.
So, by that time, it was, stuff was already going through.
But the intention is when we have late buses to be sending, and that's sent out, like Ms. Cancela said, through the transportation department.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much. And then...
I just wanted to add, and I know probably a number of board members have questions related to transportation, and happy to take some of those here. And I know some of you have reached out to me directly yesterday, and as we work through a number of issues, including installation of the app, we will absolutely be prepared, Lenny and his team, to provide a transportation update, a summary of where we've been from the first day of school to the next board meeting, that will cover any of number of items related to timelines for the app, and some more specific details. I know that is a, an interest, a high topic, a high-interest topic, rather, for our families, as well as for board members, and we'll be prepared to provide a thorough update.
Thank you, Dr. Cashwell. And then, one more piece about transportation. I know we're looking at our routes and our bus usage this week. Could we expect any time in the coming weeks, an update of, some of the routes to update to improve efficiencies?
Yes. Yes, ma'am. We can, we can look at that, and then we'll provide an update when we present it to the board and later in September, yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
And I know transportation has been a work in progress for a lot of reasons. You know, some people say, well, you've had all summer to plan. Well, we have been planning, not just for the summer, but the last 18 months. But as students have changed from brick-and-mortar to virtual, and maybe back to brick-and-mortar, it changes capacity and bus routes. Also, students who are just changing their transportation modes, changes bus routes. Also, as we onboard more drivers, which is an amazing thing and that we want to keep doing, it also changes bus routes. So, it's a fluid and flexible thing, and I appreciate all your team is doing to maximize the efficiency.
Thank you.
That's all for transportation.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Dr. Tigan, thank you for this update, and I appreciate, I think this is a great, today is a great illustration of us going back at least every two weeks and revisiting our mitigation strategies to include best practices and recommendations. And so, we see that today with implementing this exception from the VDH, as well as the quarantine times. And so, I think it's not just masking, some people think, thought we were just going to talk about masks every two weeks. It's not just talking about masks. It's talking, it's looking comprehensively at all of our mitigation in our buildings, what's working, what could have improvements, what new recommendations have we gotten. So, I think this is tremendous. I think the goal for all of us is to keep our students in the building safely learning. And so, by clarifying some of, shortening this quarantine time, as well as clarifying close contacts, that's going to keep a lot more students in our building. A couple of questions. Ms. Cancela asked about contact tracing, and you shared that. Is there any building, is there like a building point person for each building for contact tracing?
There, there, the nurse has served in some capacity as that contact tracing person, but it's also going through the building principal as far as, you know, information about positive cases, quarantine times, and communicating when someone is able to come back into the building. So, it is, you know, two people right now that are for different reasons. Nurses are helping, they have helped to make some phone calls and reaching out to families and updating well-adjunct files, because we have to keep track. All of these are medical records of our students, and so we have to keep a record of them in our electronic record, medical record system.
Thank you. And I know there's been some frustration from families who were put in quarantine before school started as to communication on being cleared, but quarantines from before school started from the community, that's separate, is that, that's separate from our contact tracing team?
It is, and there's some crossover, and so, things will come into the health department, and then they'll, we meet with them several times a week, but cases will come over. Sometimes we have cases that they don't have, and so it's trying to make sure that everyone's aware, but it has, you know, we met earlier this week because that process hasn't been as seamless as it needs to be for both teams to operate well. And so, we're working at how, how we approach that process and hoping that we can improve it. You know, right now with the transmission level, the number of cases is really high, and so, things are coming in from the community. They're, they've been back, you know, they're there, been coming in from the community, and, you know, that has things tied up as well. But we are working diligently to reduce that backlog and be able to, as you said, our goal is to keep students in the classroom learning and keep teachers and other staff in either the classroom, the buildings, so that we, you know, we're continuing with instruction there. It's two layers that are, both are critical to us as we continue in this school year.
Thank you. How are, how is a student or a staff member who's been informed they need to isolate or quarantine, how are they released from that? Do they, are they given a date and they're released, or do they have to wait for a specific communication?
There, it varies on what information is available when that first contact is made. And like I said, we transfer files across between the health department and schools, and so, you know, sometimes you don't have all of the pieces of information, and so you're trying to gather that first, and sometimes there's a change. And it, I know it's been frustrating to our families because I think they have a return date. I'll give you one example of something that can happen that changes it, is that my child was quarantined with a positive, say, a positive case, so they were, you know, actually, they were the ones with COVID. That then I can have a return date for that child. Of course, it depends that the child has to be asymptomatic on that date. And then, if someone else in the household gets COVID, then they go back into the quarantine because now they're in close proximity. And so, or if a parent ends up positive from the child. And so, that can end up extending, and that I know has frustrated some of our families as well. And so, it's, it's not a one-size-fits-all, you know, and so, it's trying to help families understand, but I know it can be very frustrating because they don't live in this world, and they don't want to live in this world. And sometimes, we don't want to live in this world either, but it's, you know, it's where we are and what we're trying to do to, to keep everybody safe.
Yeah, I think, I, I think that's so important to understand, you know, the pieces, and also, as much as we can, equipping families with the information they need to solve those pieces so that they're not necessarily waiting on someone who's already stretched too thin to be able to follow up.
Right.
And then, related to that, for vaccinated staff and students, if they're notified that they're a close contact, is there anything that they're waiting, and they are asymptomatic, is there anything that they are waiting on to be able to return to the building?
We're trying to get those turned around as soon as we know that they are fully vaccinated. We can't, they, we can't mandate that they share that with us, but we know, you know, we hope that they will, and I think most of them want to be able to share their vaccination status if it means they can get back in the building and to work, or, or even for our students, you know, our, some, many of our students are vaccinated at the middle and high school level, and so getting them back in, it's, it's not just our staff, it's their students as well.
Yeah, I think anything we can do and think outside the box on how to shorten that turnaround so we can get back to that goal that we stated earlier of keeping our students safely in the building, learning. And then, just a last thing, looking at the dashboard on our webpage that we use to track cases, it has the school, the number of positives, number of contacts, outbreaks, date last listed. I don't know how easy it is to update, so I don't want to reinvent the wheel, but it would be really helpful if it had kind of two extra columns so that it was like the number of positive cases this week, the number of contacts from positive cases this week, and then what we have existing as kind of totals. I think for me, it helps when I'm looking at the schools in my district to see who might need more support, or just understanding what happens. Sometimes, it's hard to keep that total number in my head to compare to yesterday, but if I at least had a breakdown of what's happening this week, I think it helps to visualize what's happening across the county.
Thank you.
That's all. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Shea. Ms. Ogbrun?
Thank you. I wanted to echo the last point that Ms. Shea mentioned. I've heard that from another, a number of constituents as well, that more information is, is better, and so they've asked for similar kinds of data, and I think... is better, and so they've asked for similar kinds of data, and I think that would help. So if we can, you know, do something like that. But just real quick, I know that you're probably pretty tired, and I, I just want to let you know how much we all appreciate the work that you've done over the last few weeks, especially on communicating with parents, getting that information out there that they need, and making sure that everybody has the answers as best as we can give them. So I wanted to say that. But secondly, I know that there are parents who still have questions, they still have things that they don't feel like have been covered, or they don't know where to look. So I thought I would just ask you real quickly, what's the best resource for parents if they're trying to find answers, we'll get it on the record, where should they go specifically to our website, et cetera? What are their options for getting their answers to their questions that they might have? And I'm getting some about the flow chart and that kind of thing, so if you could just summarize it, where are they, all those answers are, I think?
There are two places on the website that they could go for information. One is when they look at the health button and can push on that, and there's a plethora of information there. And then also on the back-to-school site, where there's information, you know, that could be more pertaining to learning, like the document you just showed, it's tied to learning during quarantine and those processes. And so there's lots of information there, there's some FAQs there as well, and if there's something that they don't see and have a suggestion, they can certainly send me an email and say, here's something I'd like to see more information, or a question can you get answered and put on the website, and we'll work towards that.
Okay. Thank you so much. That's it for me.
Thank you so much, Ms. Aubrey. Mrs. Atkins?
Thank you, Dr. Tygen. I don't have a lot, but I just, more so a statement than a question, because I want families to be aware of some of the things that we are doing. Definitely want to make sure, in addition to continuing to improve on the mitigation strategies that we have, one of the other areas of improvement around athletics, particularly now with COVID, is the way in which we handle our ticket sales for our athletic programs, which is a manual one. And something that I have talked to Dr. Tygen, as well as Dr. Cashwell about, is about evolving to an electronic ticket process. And so I do want to share that with families, particularly those that are buying tickets for games and so forth and so on. It makes sense, even if COVID wasn't here, to continue to evolve and move towards an electronic ticket process. So know that we are definitely exploring that and doing the best we can to move as swiftly as possible. So, Dr. Tygen, not expecting a comment unless you have one, but I just want families to know that I'm continuing to look for different ways that we can improve that are out of the box, and I certainly believe moving forward with an electronic ticket process is helpful in this space. So wanted to share that with families. And then Mr. Pritchard, if you would come up, because I have a question around transportation.
And while he's coming, I will share that the Health Committee on Tuesday did discuss the e-ticketing and felt like it was something we needed to move towards, and we're in the process, and if we have more information, we'll be gladly, glad to share.
Fantastic. Thank you. One of the areas, as schools begin to settle, the first day of school always is about working through kinks, and there are some things you are just not going to know until you have actually maybe the first week of school to better understand, and then I know principals will sit down to try to explore to make changes that best suits that particular school, because every single school is different. Particularly with Highland Springs High School, once things settle, one of the idea is to look at an alternative bus route, because I know that there are families that have chosen to take their children to school, and that increases the line at the beginning and end of school. So over at the New Highland Springs High School, perhaps looking at just exploring some alternative ways for the buses to get in and out of school. So as you're continuing all that you do, just wanted to share that with you as well.
Thank you.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Atkins. Redirect to Ms. Shea real quick.
Thank you, Chair. Dr. Tygen, one more for you. I know we talked a little bit about testing programs at Glen Lee last time. Has there any, been any further consideration of perhaps participating in a program like the, what is it called, the Vista, through the Virginia Health Department?
There has, the Health Committee also discussed that. There wasn't any, we decided we needed additional information. It's been difficult to get information from especially large school divisions that have implemented. They have signed up, but they haven't been able to implement what, at this point, given everything else. And so we're in that gathering data stage, because there's, there's a lot of tentacles to it that aren't obvious at the beginning. You know, once we have medical data on students, there's an obligation, even staff, there's an obligation to keep that and the retention, and how do we do that? So those things are being discussed, absolutely.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Dr. Tygen, I just have one question, and my question just pertains to our student athletes and outdoor athletic events. I know Mrs. Consella briefly broached that subject, but for me, with community transmission levels still high, my concern is about health and safety of our student, athlete, staff, and game attendees. Some school systems have mandated vaccines for their student athletes. For many of our collegiate and professional sports teams, they have what's called fan health and safety guidelines that require game attendees to show proof of vaccination or negative COVID test for entry. Some require face coverings and other mitigation strategies that extend to the outdoor setting. When we take into account all the vaccination efforts that we've done jointly as the county along with layered mitigation strategies, we're imploring to keep our students and staff safe in the buildings, the buses, what recommendations, if any, is the Health Committee exploring now to keep our student athletes and game attendees safe in the context of, I know Fairfax County specifically is as well guided by VHSL, but they took the step to mandate vaccines for their student athletes. Could you just speak to what may be hindering us, or are we exploring that avenue as well?
We really have not, as a Health Committee, talked about mandating vaccines. There's, you know, there are reasons why some individuals cannot receive a vaccine, there's personal reasons why they might not want to, you know, and we have really focused on the mitigation efforts, and we still highly recommend our fans that come to games to wear masks. Our athletes are expected to wear masks when they're not actually in play. And, you know, those are, we encourage social distancing, you know, so while we share with everyone what those mitigation expectations are, what we would like to see, you know, one of those being mandated vaccines, we've not done. I mean, it's, it's something that is out there that we can talk about, but I think it comes with other, other things as well. And we're living in a time where, you know, I think specifically about, about staff, you know, and you think about our athletic coaches and so on. We're struggling right now. I mean, you, you've talked about bus drivers and our situation, teachers, you know, it's really difficult right now to find sufficient qualified staff to help with keeping our schools open and operating. And so to add another barrier to, you know, that is very personal to some people, it's just not something we've, you know, decided to do at this point.
So I would love to, I guess this would be an ongoing conversation, I guess it's ebbing and flowing in regards to shifting. I do understand and appreciate and respect the challenges that we are having staffing-wise. So, I mean, this is definitely something we'll continue to talk about. I appreciate that answer.
Absolutely.
Madam Superintendent?
All right. That concludes our Health Committee report. We'll look forward to bringing back, of course, continual updates as our Health Committee continues to work through any number of issues that you all have surfaced and many more that we didn't tackle today. And then also to some of the transportation-specific questions that went to Mr. Pritchard, we will be sure to prepare a specific update transportation item to get at any number of, again, issues that have been raised here today, and again, we continue to work through those.